All right, good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, School Committee Business Meeting to Order, please. Mrs. Yell, can you take the role, please?
Ms. Yell?
Here.
Sheriff Hall?
Here.
Boozman?
Here.
Steve Cole?
Here.
Frank Callahan?
Here.
Juliet Walker?
President?
Breonna Higgins?
Here.
All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just wanted to take a quick minute before we start tonight to talk about two new reporters that passed away recently who had a tremendous impact on the Newport Public Schools. The first is Coach James T. Stalen, Jim Stalen, whose name bears, will live on forever out in the field, out in the World War I stadium. Coach Stalen came here in 1964, and it was interesting, you know, he turned 90 last year and again went into the hospital a few months ago and kind of passed away quickly. But it was funny that this happened around the same time as former Mayor Byron Matthews also passing away a few weeks ago. Two really giants, particularly in the mid-sixties on. When Jim Stalen got here in 1964, he really made Newport Athletics, you know, appointment viewing. I think Steve, growing up here, can certainly probably attest to that. You know, his teams played with class, they played for him. He was just an incredible influence, I would say, on generations of Newporters. I got to know him, he transferred over into the, when he got into the eighties, he transferred over to be the Athletic Director and was there up until 1993, which was my senior year. But just a tremendous influence that a lot of people really helped Newport through. You know, this was before, and I mentioned Byron Matthews just because, you know, he became mayor in 1968 and kind of shepherded us through this urban renewal and the transformation of our downtown into what we all love about Newport today, I think. One of many things we love about Newport. And I think, you know, Jim Stalen coming around at that time really made Newport, you know, brought that pride back to Newport. I think people really cared a lot about their school, a lot about their community, and he kind of rallied those people together, starting in 1964, all the way through his tenure at NHS. And the other person I wanted to mention tonight was Jean Foley Doyle, whose funeral was this past Saturday. I didn't have her for a teacher, she was my homeroom teacher when I was a freshman, but I know my parents both had her in school, a wonderful history teacher who just brought a lot of energy and life into the classroom. And then her days outside the classroom, she was just as energetic and put all that love of history into publishing books on the history of Newport, which is pretty incredible, too. So she also has a long-lasting legacy. And again, I was a history major at Ohio State, but I know she really fostered that love of history with a lot of kids that came through Newport. So again, I just wanted to mention them both tonight, and I hope you all will join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Hall.
Any other members want to comment? I know, Mr. Cole, sometimes you like to say a few words of remembrance.
Well, just with respect to Mr. Stalen, he shaped a lot of young men in this city, and, you know, for the better, and he was a very caring and dedicated coach, as well as someone who really paid attention to what was done, you know, in the classroom and away from the classroom. And I did have Mrs. Foley for a history teacher, and basically, you know, she was everything you described, Mayor Reed, and then some. And, you know, Byron was, you know, Byron was a great, great leader, and as you mentioned, helped bring the city through urban renewal and helped us make some really good choices that have, you know, paid the dividend that we all appreciate today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Anyone else? Do we have anyone present for public comment this evening? Okay, so moving on to staff recognitions.
All right. I've got my extension cord. All right, well, this is, as we say, this is kind of an honor to be up here as superintendent, get to recognize some wonderful people within our school community, and tonight's no different. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing five crossing guards for their hard work, dedication, commitment to the safety of the Newport children and families as they travel to and from school each day. As we know, regardless of the weather, our crossing guards assist our children cross busy streets and intersections as they arrive and depart school, and at times, believe it or not, deal with dangerous, even hostile situations. Not in Massachusetts, Massachusetts drivers never get angry at people, so, no. So always put the student first and making sure the streets are safe to cross for everybody. They're, to me, the true unsung heroes of the district. In all great organizations, everyone has a vital, important role in our crossing guards. Are there for us each and every day. And as superintendent, on behalf of the public schools, I want to thank them for their dedication and hard work. We truly appreciate your efforts. So at this time, I'm going to call, I'd like to call you up, and we can stand over there and we'll take some photos afterwards. Joanne Yell did an amazing job, I want to give her credit. I love the little stop signs on the bags, stop to be recognized, so. I don't want to take credit for that, Joanne, thanks. So we have Janet and Frank Crump, come on up and we'll stand over there. Six and a half years, and they crossed the Breslinian School. And I don't, I think Frank's doing the laundry right now?
No, he has a seven o'clock online class.
All right. We'd like to also call up Jude Nelson. She's been here for one year and helps cross the Knoc and the Mullen School students. Come on up. And then we have Diane Learned, six years at the Knoc-Mullen Crossing. Thank you very much, and we'll have them stand over there, Mayor. We'll take a team photo after. And then also Robin Turner, 21 years. She's currently crossing at the high school. And she's also, Robin's also a lunch monitor at the Breslinian. And believe it or not, her 21 years of dedication has worn many hats to Newport Public Schools. She worked as a sub, lunch monitor, crossing guard at all our schools, and we can always count on her to step up when we need her, always willing to help out. So Robin Turner, too. All right, round of applause for our crossing guard. Take a photo off, let me get on the end here. There you go. Yeah, it's recognition.
Can I say stop? Stop? Got it.
Thank you. Yeah, you should have. I might need that during the buzzer presentation for questions, stop sign. I don't know if you want to take a quick recess, or are we good? It's up to you.
I think we're good.
All right.
Everyone's taking a quick moment now, and then we'll just, we can jump right in.
All right, so up next, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Callahan, do we have warrants this evening?
Yes, we do. I move that the following named bills of the Newport Public Schools amounting in aggregate to $636,897.15. Be approved and forwarded to the City Honor of Repayment, there are no conflicts.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first one is a business meeting from April 3rd. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Move we adopt the minutes of April 3rd?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then the second set of minutes was this special meeting from April 11th. Ms. Walker, Ms. Higgins, were not in attendance at that meeting, any corrections? Okay, we can get a motion?
Moved, so moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Obstand?
I don't need to, but I will.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
So we're all set with consent agenda, we're ready for the student representative report.
Okay, starting with college and career studies. The high school will have a session on dual enrollment on Thursday, April 27th, at 8:15, with our partners from Northern Essex Community College discussing how and when to get started with dual enrollment classes and the value of why. And staff from College Aid Pro on Thursday, May 4th, at 8:00 a.m. will be speaking about the financial aid process and all that goes into dealing with the FAFSA, CSS Profile, scholarships, and even how to appeal an award. In the next two weeks, our students will be completing their dual enrollment forensic science course through Endicott College. The professor of this course is also a sergeant for the Crime Scene Department of the Massachusetts State Police. He has been working, he has been wonderful, and our students have really enjoyed his perspective and experience working on extreme cases. Twenty-seven students had the opportunity to take the class. Last night, all students individually presented a forensic science case they had the most interest in. We have received wonderful feedback from the students. The next Endicott course will be offered to students through May and July, and it is about, it is an introduction to information and computer technology class. We greatly appreciate that the NEF has continued to fund the dual enrollment opportunity with Endicott College. And for student recognitions, the Climate Cafe. Recently, Sophia Franka was one of several students from the North Shore who facilitated a climate cafe. Through this, she led dialogue with residents from the North Shore regarding ways to support our environment. And the National Historic Sites Cleanup, on May 6th, Senior Sophia Hartford is the coordinator for the series of service opportunities, Plum Island Beach Cleanup. Last week, over 70 students participated in the beach cleanup of Plum Island organized by Nolan Smith and ACES. It is very exciting to have so many students spending time to support our community.
Okay, and now for the Rotary Fashion Show and Interact Club. So last week, students Aubriana Kronstrom, Alex Sullivan, Ada Moran, Claudia Cummings, and Emily Kate Slocum supported the Newport Rotary Club at their annual fashion show. These students are a part of the Interact Club, which is our largest student organization. It consists of over 150 students who participate in a variety of service events across the school year. This is a great club for students to become a part of and make new friends. For the Belize trip, 37 NHS students and six staff chaperones successfully completed an eight-day learning trip to Belize over April vacation. Students visited two Mayan archaeological sites, learning about who the Mayans were and are today, took a jungle survival course and learned how to make snares, hammocks out of sticks, leaves, and vines, build a fire, collect water, and they ate termites, which are high in protein and taste minty. Students also visited a primary school and learned about the education.
Didn't taste minty to me, but.
And learned about the education system in Belize. And finally, they studied the ecosystem by visiting a butterfly nature preserve, the Belize Zoo, and snorkelled along the largest living barrier reef in the world and what can be done to preserve and restore these habitats. And then for congratulations, congratulations to Ava Maglio, who's the recipient of the Mass Art and National Art Association Scholarship Award, which gains her participation, and the summer studios sponsored by the Hemphill Family Foundation in Massachusetts College Art and Design, College of Art and Design. And congratulations to all the students who are inducted into the National Art Honor Society on April 4th, and also the students who are inducted into the National Honor Society on April 13th. That's it?
Thank you. All right, on to the budget.
Do you want to call up Mr. Little Hill now?
Sure. Mr. Little Hill, you want to, yeah, you can sit there.
You do have a little nameplate that says your name, or you can stick with student representative if you want.
Can I sit there?
Okay. So we have our final budget presentation. I have some slides in the beginning, and then afterwards, you know, we'll sit down and go through the budget book if there's any further questions. I did receive some great questions from school committee, and part of the information that you have in front of you is very detailed answers to a lot of those specific questions. And, you know, so we can follow up, I think, after with that, if there's any more follow-up questions on some of those. So as we move forward for our FY '24 budget proposal, and final, hopefully, budget proposal, as we recall, this is our budget summary. And we've down to a 4.5 city allocation, and as you can see, we shifted some of those funds over for the overall budget of 6.6 overall total. And as you see, you know, I won't go through all of those line items, we've talked about these multiple times, but really, our state circuit breaker funding, our ESR III grant, and some of these other projects, school choice, are also assisting with a lot of our funding for this fiscal year. Oop, so there's our 4.5, and then on the bottom, the 6.6. So I think on April 3rd, we're at a 5.3 city allocation, and we reduce that to the 4.5. So as we've, you've all have seen this before, so all in the blue. If you look down the bottom, that's funding through savings, grants, and other funds. And then what we've done as we've gone back to do revisions, the special education, the BCBA increase, the language-based teacher in special education teacher, we're shifting those funds to circuit breaker reimbursement, because we did get a bump in that, and we feel very comfortable that we can cover those costs on the circuit breaker. So what remains right now are the assistant groundskeeper, the tech integrator, the little bump of the point-two math teacher, and the asking the.
Music?
What did I say, math? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, music, thank you. Point-two music teacher, and then the asking the global citizenship piece. So throughout our process, I think the several presentations, and also the superintendent advisory committee, we did our April 3rd budget presentation. So we felt kind of condensing a lot of the most frequently asked questions that we received by the community and other city officials. So we tried to put together how the budget gets developed from a lot of the most asked questions on the school side. So as we all know how other schools funded, the first piece is Newport allocation. Eighty-five percent of our budget is the city allocation, which covers the salaries, the steps, columns, and a lot of the personnel. Also, the Chapter 70 funds, and then other state aid that the city of Newport gets, and then there's other city revenues that come into the city of Newport. The remainder of the budget is funded by exactly what we said. The reimbursements that we receive from the state and federal programs, Medicaid, special education, circuit breaker, school choice funds. Then we have grants, both the entitlement and competitive grants, and then the fees that we've been talking about, transportation, athletic, building rentals, and our preschool tuition. And just when we're looking at grants, that money that is one that the entitlement grant is the state and the feds are seeing a need for our students and our population. And the competitive grants are also tied to the needs of the schools. So a lot of these grants that we apply for and/or the entitlement grants, the federal government and the state see the needs of the district. So that's, a lot of that grant that we pursue has to tie to the needs of our population. So it's not just free money and they're gonna, state's just gonna go out and say, oh, here's a half a million dollars, because, you know, you guys are good people. It doesn't work like that. So that's why a lot of the shifting ties in to a lot of our initiatives and also the needs of the district. So as we've talked about in previous budgets, what drives a school budget? As we said, the budget drivers each year that are pretty consistent and typical and predictable. The first one is enrollment and population changes. So as we all know, one example would be our newcomer families coming into the district the past couple of years. Those population changes allow us to advocate for more funding. Our enrollment in the special populations also tie in to special education, students, you know, with learning disabilities and things like that. The second piece is salary increases. We know, we can look at going into even next year, typically what our contract obligations, including steps and lanes and cost of living, is going to be. Transportation, unfortunately, we can predict that, and we already know it's going to go up astronomically. Unfortunately, it's one of those budget drivers for all districts that's very concerning, both general ed and special education costs. Operations and maintenance, you know, the service contracts, building and grounds, maintenance, supply and equipment needs, and utility costs. We can pretty much estimate and predict that, especially with inflation. We're estimating about a $200,000 increase just in those costs. In special education, especially out of district tuition and transportation, we can drive, we can kind of predict of what those costs are going to be. And then fees and grants. So there is fluctuations in outside revenue, user fees, and competitive entitlement grants. So if we don't hit a demographic for an entitlement grant, we may lose some funding. But typically, it's pretty fairly consistent, and we start to base the budget off of those areas. So what's a level service budget? Because we've been talking about this a lot, so level service budget and what's considered are those budget drivers, salaries, and we'll get to that next slide after this. As I said, the operational expenses, inflation impact, energy costs, supplies and materials. We're obviously seeing a cost increase because of the inflation impact, and then changes in grants and user fees. So what of our budgetary salaries? So as we all know, through the multiple budget presentations that we've done, Newport has union and non-union employees. I think we're approximately 450 employees throughout the district. There are three unions in our district, Teachers Association, ASME, Instructional Assistance. And then we also have salary obligations that include the cost of living. So sometimes on some of our budget presentations, you'll see COLA, and that's what that stands for, the Cost of Living Adjustments. And then all three unions have step and lanes built into their salary schedule according to the contracts. So years of service could create a step change. Postgraduate credits for our staff that's continuing their education could lead to a lane change. So salary lines also include substitute teachers and non-union employees, such as administrators throughout the district. So we've talked about Chapter 70 multiple times, and as we all know, Chapter 70, some of the key factors are your foundational budget, enrollment, inflation, and the wage adjustment. And then also other contribution, property taxes, resident home income, and then some municipal revenue growth factor. So we have this chart, Newport got a bump in Chapter 78 by almost a million dollars this year. We also want to, that was also part of the kindergarten going full free tuition. We could count those numbers within our student enrollment. So that's a, that's a positive piece in Chapter 78 for Newport. We haven't seen a jump like that in a lot of years. What is circuit breaker funding? So these, in Chapter 70 formula, the way the state does that is still very complex. You have, you know, people could come in and go through that. Circuit breaker funding is a little bit easier. So basically, over a threshold for circuit breaker, we'll get 75% reimbursement. So typically, the threshold, certain threshold is around $47,000 that it would cost to educate a student with special needs. And once you go over that $47,000, you will qualify for circuit breaker reimbursement will, is at 75%. One of the things the governor has said, that she's going to keep that at 75%, that's the state law. In the past, you really couldn't count on circuit breaker being at 75%. Typically, it would come in around 70% to 72%, which also add a lot of stress to districts. And then this is a common question we receive a lot, especially in Newport. Our enrollment has stayed pretty much steady within 100 students over the past 10 years and almost even 20 years. So the question that we receive sometimes is, well, why, if costs are going up while your enrollment stays relatively steady? I think there's a lot of factors that go into that. The first factor, as we look at Chapter 766, which was passed for students with disabilities back in the 1970s, it was a great law to bring equality to students with disabilities. For us, it translates to Chapter 71B and then 603 CMA 28. So one of the big pieces from the North Shore superintendents is to really look at this formula, because the law hasn't, the law is in the books, but the funding hasn't changed. So that was one thing that we're working, hopefully, with the governor's office to create a committee statewide to really look at supporting the Chapter 76. And these are sometimes of those unfunded mandates. Like, we're required to obviously educate every student, which is a great thing, but the laws really haven't caught up to the times of, you know, 50 years ago, I think, was when Chapter 766 was passed. So the increase for us is really special education enrollment, so I'm going to show you a slide right after this one. So increased cost providing special education services. There's higher teacher-student ratios. So when we're talking about special education, there are certain ratios tied to the laws for students with special needs. So it could be a one-to-eight ratio. It could be a one-to-five ratio, depending on the learning disability, or sometimes it could be a one-to-three ratio. So higher teacher ratios to students is a big factor. Transportation is also included, free transportations for students with disabilities, you know, throughout, especially the out-of-district placement. We've talked about these throughout our budget presentations. Special program development, language-based individual development center, post-grad strategies, and therapeutic programs to educate all of our students. COVID staffing, so you'll see, we'll talk about this, because we do have extra funds supporting learning loss. And remember, those are targeted funds, specific at this time, and as we move forward, we may not need those positions in the future. And then the other piece here is the increase for social-emotional support. So a lot of the funding increases with staffing is geared towards behavioral specialists, counselors, adjustment counselors, social workers, specific students. specific, um, students, teachers with, uh, specifics, uh, certifications to address different students within the district with different learning disabilities. And then the last piece is medical needs is also part of those costs. So, uh, students that need, uh, nursing onsite, one-to-one nursing, medical, um, support is the cost that, um, we encumber throughout the operational budget. So the North Shore superintendents have been working together for a long time, um, because, you know, the discussions that we have in Newbury Port are going around the North Shore. And this is, I think, a nice illustration from 2007 to 2023. So they took the average of North Shore districts, um, which we have 24 on the North Shore. Uh, and then they highlighted a lot, some of the KPN districts. So when you look at, um, this box here in, um, 2007 to 23, so general fund of an operational budget has increased by 55.9%. So almost 60% over that time. When you look at special education, out-of-district budgets has increased within that time period by almost 100% at 95%. Part of that, um, funding is also the transportation for students out of, out of district. And that has increased by 83%. When you look at the total student enrollment on the North Shore, um, within our Newbury Port, we've kind of been steady, but some districts have dropped their enrollment overall. But their special education enrollment has increased by 30% over that time. And then the special education district enrollment has increased at that time. So when you're going back to looking at budgets and why they're increasing costs, not only in Newbury Port, but throughout all the districts in the Commonwealth, it's because of, um, because of those costs that are not necessarily adding, uh, mainstream teachers. It's providing the support for these children that need this support. So by no means are we saying, hey, you know, we love our children, we wanna support them 100%. But if we keep going down this path as a state, um, and this is why the superintendents wanna have a, a committee to really look at this, eventually transportation and special education costs are gonna continue to increase to the point where it's gonna be unfundable. Um, so that's why, um, our, you know, our district, but along with the North Shore superintendents, are really, um, kind of getting the air of some legislators and, uh, state officials. Um, because it's a, it's a problem and you can see the cost over that time period. So we have the budget book has, is there and we'll kind of go through that with Mr. Little Hale. Um, and then we have a live link, um, that people can look at our school committee budget. But just to recap again, uh, in the budget for the people that are listening, when you, uh, log on, uh, you'll see on the right-hand side are our notes. Um, and as we said before to the school committee, we have a new tech department. So we took a lot of the, uh, technology out of the, um, building budgets and moved it over to the tech. Uh, so you'll see that, uh, being highlighted. Also our cost in building maintenance and operations, so throughout our budget, um, when you see those costs, uh, you'll see the increased utility costs. Um, and then some positions that have been reclassified, um, which, uh, Mr. Little Hale's been doing to really reclassify positions so they fit, uh, into our munis, uh, descriptions. And then, um, the new investments are also noted in the budget book column. And then the budget book reflects all planned expenses for the district funded through a number of sources noted in our budget summary slide, which was that, uh, beginning slide. Our grant overview, just once again, that's, uh, the entitlement grants versus the competitive grants. Uh, we do have some out there that are still pending that hopefully, uh, will get some good news in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then the last piece is a link to all of the budget presentations, uh, here. And I think I wanted to go back just one piece 'cause we have all of the, um, descriptions. Let me just, for the, um, well, I think it's in that, I'm sorry, it's on the, um, it's in that. I forget which slide it was. Do you remember, Ms. Frolon? What's that?
On your table. At the beginning, press escape.
Oh, I see. So it's in the beginning, so the descriptions. Yeah. All right, I'm sorry. On here, this was an important piece that we wanted to show the link for the people that are watching. So up here on this, this is a live link that's on the website. So see Budget Center presentations so that people can click on that. And then that brings you to this school committee presentation. So if you wanted to see the, let's say the groundskeeper position, um, it gives you the assistant groundskeeper, um, and then gives you the reason why we wanna, um, add that as part of the budget. So for every new position within this, uh, presentation, people can go back and look at the descriptors of, um, what the need is and, and the rationale for it. So we felt that, that would also be helpful. So we put that on the, the final budget. And I think that's all I have for, at this point. And I'll sit in my seat and then we can, uh, ask more questions. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need my mic. All right, any questions or, um, follow-up or?
First, I just wanna thank Sean and his staff for, uh, you know, working on this budget. You know, we've come down quite a bit from aspirational budget to a few weeks ago to now, um, you know, your final budget. So I appreciate all the hard work. Uh, I guess my first question is, I guess this maybe, might be for Phil. Um, and so I'll just preface this too, like, so I'll be talking a lot tonight from the mayor's perspective and not necessarily the school committee's perspective. Uh, you know, it's funny, coming from that chair just a couple of years ago, uh, this year in particular, it's just definitely hit home more about, um, you know, how my role has changed. But, um, so I guess Phil first, so I, so the Medicaid piece, we don't include that in the city, um, the city appropriation, why don't we consider that a part of it? Um, cause I, you know, I, I guess I would consider that part of it and it's, it's more like 4.6, you know, closer to 4.7%.
Um, historic, can you hear me with this? Is this close enough?
Yeah.
I mean, historically, since I've been here, it's always been a separate line in terms of the budget presentation.
Okay.
Why does it roll in there? I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just, you're right. But, you know, we did up the Medicaid portion from 110, which is what it's been for, I don't know how many years, up to 200 because last year, in fiscal year 22, it turned out it was either 280 or 335,000 that we got. And this year we're already at 135,000 with another quarter to go. So it's speaking with, um, Ethan, he's one who actually suggests we bump it up a little bit. And I went back and said, why don't we bump it up a little bit more than that?
Yeah.
Just so that, you know, try to reflect what's actually coming in.
Right. So I just wanted to mention that because that's not included in, in, in what the percentage changes, but that, that would, that would make it go up.
If you split the two out, the way I, cause I'm trying to play math here, um, what I would call the direct city allocation, which would include the chapter 70 turns out to be 4.45. And obviously the, um, Medicaid goes up by like 90 or 81%. Yes, you put the two together combined, it turns out to be slightly over 4.6 something.
Yeah.
Maybe closer to 4.7.
Yeah.
But from my perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, I always consider the Medicaid separate from the cities. You know, but if going forward, we wanna roll that back in, so we talked.
Well, I was saying, for this level, I'm sure, I just wanted everyone else to know that, 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 that's how I have to think of it because it is, it is a higher percentage. Um, okay, so that was my first thing, so thank you for answering that. I guess the other thing I just wanna mention, and I hope we can have a conversation about it, but it's, it looks like there's about eight positions we're trying to add total. So just, just to tell everyone on the city side, maybe in the last eight years, we haven't added eight positions, especially not in one year, but maybe not in eight years total, we haven't been able to add eight positions on the city side. And I, and I know this is different because we're, we're talking with schools and population change. So I guess I'd just like to hear a little bit about, so my, my fear is that maybe, Phil, you can answer this too. So we got a bump in the, the special education circuit breaker this year, which is true. But that could completely be backed down next year. And, and it looks like we're trying to fund a number of positions on that. Um, so what happens next year if we don't get the, you know, the bump there or we don't have the money to, 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 you know, to pay for those?
I'll just talk from the numbers side and then the superintendent can talk about from the, the program, the program side. Uh, you're right, in terms of ESSER money also disappearing next year, you know, as the superintendent said earlier, you know, ESSER funds have been used for very targeted positions. And one of the things that we have to do in fiscal year 24 is start to review all those positions to see, you know, we're three, four years now into COVID and I may be overstepping the bounds. We, are they still needed and things like that? And that goes into the program side. Um, so we are aware in terms of what's still being funded from, one, the funds are gonna disappear. And then again, in terms of chapter 70, um, we all know chapter 70 is sort of like circuit breaker. It can be a roller coaster. Um, sometimes it's a really terrifying dive down and sometimes it's a great ride up. You can't, we don't know what's gonna happen next year. We can just go on base with what we've seen in the last couple of years. You know, we've still got a year or two left of SOA to finish getting that implemented and that's part of the law in terms of impacting chapter 70. Um, I made my timelines off. And based on some of the comments made by the governor, I think we've got a strong supporter in the state house in terms of education and things like that. So, um, I always consider myself a worst-case scenario guy. So yes, I'm aware of those things coming down the road. I think we have positioned ourselves pretty well that we can handle, um, unexpected things over the next few years. Um, we are fortunate as a district in terms of, we have, um, very strong interest in other districts sending students here. So we have a good revenue source in terms of, uh, school choice. Um, I have to give, uh, where's Andy? Is Andy still here? He's over there. Andy's doing a great job in terms of, um, getting, uh, foreign students to come over to the high school in terms of, um, enrolling for half a year, a year and that. So that's another revenue source, um, that we have. We've also been fortunate over the last couple of years in terms of what's been going on with COVID, not expending as much on certain things that we have in the past. So we have been able to build up some, um, I'll call rainy day funds of both transportation and, um, school choice, even though we are spending that down. So we are positioned, I think, well for the next couple of years to be able to handle the disappearance of the ESSER funds. And, you know, if we, if we look like a, uh, going, putting my prior career on as a banker, looking at stress tests, you know, I think we can handle for the next couple of years some fairly, fairly, oh, god, fairly, um, some fairly decent impacts that may hit us that won't overall necessarily, uh, cause us to be in the position where suddenly we gotta chop, chop, chop.
Uh huh.
You know, I, again, I'm trying, I don't like making promises that I can't keep.
Sure.
And so, and again, I think we've positioned ourselves pretty well that we're gonna be able to do that. But, you know, we always need to be looking at our overall cost structure, what we can do to change it or become more efficient. And so, it's what we do, it's at least what I try to do every day.
Yep.
Right, and, and just following up on, on that, it's, and I think that's one thing that, that we've done every year since I've been here is we always look at our programs, reallocate, uh, funding within our operational budget to, you know, support staff or offset costs. I think that's really important. When we look at the budget summary, um, that specialized program administrator, um, that's not technically a, a new position. Remember, that was a, uh, reallocation of a Breznerian, uh, administrator. And then when we look at the BCBA, grade four, language-based teacher and special ed teacher at the IDC, that really ties to, uh, programming needs, uh, for our kids. So that's, that's, that's a necessity, uh, in building our special education program. Um, you know, we, without those positions, we're not gonna be able to, uh, service as many kids as, as we, we plan on. And remember, part of our goal and strategic plan is to develop in, uh, in-district programming for our students and families. So, um, that's why that really ties nicely, uh, for circuit breaker because that's really, uh, the students that, um, were gonna benefit from that. Um, the other ones, um, those are off the table, if you recall, as I'm looking, um, at the scratches. Um, and then I, as Mr. Little Hale said, ESSER III is a specific targeted, a lot of that, those staff are specific targeted staff members to assist with coming out of COVID. So if, if all goes well down, down the road, we may be, you know, reallocating those positions or, or some of those positions may not be needed, uh, in the future. So, um, that's kinda where we're at. And as we went through this budget, a few times we're shifting, uh, a lot of the professional development, um, you know, the alternative programs, things like that into ESSER III, which ties nicely of those, of those spending. So we're, we're trying, I, I agree with Mr. Little Hale and I think we've been very, um, calculating over the years to, we have, a lot of that has been going towards, the grants have been going towards, um, you know, technology, ventilation. But there are some positions that we felt we needed as we came out of COVID. Um, so we didn't, you know, add like four English teachers out of ESSER III and all of a sudden, uh, we're not gonna hit with teach English. So, um, that's, that's kinda the strategy that we're utilizing. Uh, these are needed positions that we felt, um, we didn't, we didn't have to burden the city and the city allocations that we can pick these costs up within our operational budget and or shift some of these over to some of those revenue sources that we have, so.
If I could just add one other thing. You go back and look at the demographics of the students with, here in Newbury Port, you go back 20 years and look at what you have now, they are very different. And again, we can go back to our newcomers program. You know, you didn't have that five years ago and we've had to invest quite a bit in terms of resources, be able to put those supports in place and support, put those supports in place to help out those folks who are in the newcomers program. So, you know, things are changing and just trying to adjust, but we have to be able to support all of that.
Right. Uh, yeah, I have a question. Did you have one?
No, go ahead.
Um, I'm, I just wanna make sure that I understand this 'cause I'm, I'm looking at the, and correct me if I'm wrong and Phil will probably be correcting me. Um, the FY24 budget, when you actually, when I'm looking at the number of staff that we're adding, at the district level, we're adding one full-time staff. At the high school, we're adding one full-time staff. The BOBAs.
BCBA's.
BCBA's is one full-time staff.
Yep.
Um, the language teacher is an additional full-time staff and the special ed teacher is an additional full-time staff. But those are actually being taken care of, at least for this year. And so it's really, it's 5.2 really, staff. It looks like that we're adding just 5.2 staff. Um, out of, asking the city to cover the additional 5.2 staff. Is that, is that my understanding? I mean, we've, we figured out how to fund 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
In, in the yellow ones.
10, 11, 12. So we figured out how to, how to serve 12, uh, positions within the budget as exists.
Positions.
Right, right.
Right.
I think that's eight total positions.
And many of them are also set by positions we currently have that we're not carrying forward.
Right. And I would just remind everyone too, just again, this is from the city side. This is just accounting for the salaries. So any position we add, all the benefits, that's all falling on the city side too. So it's actually a lot more expensive than actually this looks like. So I think it's over about $330,000 worth of new positions or, uh, new positions, but that's just the salaries. All right, just so everyone knows that.
Can I just ask, um, just a clarifying question here? Um, so the last time we looked at this, we were at the, uh, 5.3% increase on the city allocation and now we're at 4.5, which sounds, sounds good. Um, did you do that without removing any line items? That's how it looks. I just wanna clarify. You haven't removed anything, any positions or?
No.
Okay, so that's all been achieved, that reduction has been achieved by, um,
Shifting.
Shifting the funding sources. Okay, just, just want to be sure.
One of the things that, um, we were able to do, um, we've had some changes in terms of our out-of-district students for next year. So we were able to back down a little bit of what we thought we were gonna be spending and able to use that to then fund those positions using circuit breaker money. And then, so that's what we've been trying to do. My goal, at least my personal goal was try to come back down as close as we could, looking at other potential funding sources so we didn't have to make any other, um, changes in terms of removing anything from the budget from last time.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the positions right now, um, is the assistant groundskeeper, the tech integrator and the 0.2 increase for the music is still on the city allocation side.
I have a comment slash question about the, um, on this conversation around positions. I have a comment slash question about the, on this conversation around positions. So for, for people at home that may not know, a lot of the special edu, students who have an IEP and qualify for special education have compensatory services. There are services that, that the school district is required to provide, and so if there are, you know, a certain number of students, they're going to have to add positions to cover those compensatory services, whether they're from positions or from an outside provider. So I'm not sure what sort of percentage or number of these positions, they might be actually required to fill based on students' IEPs, and then for those that you might not be required to fill, or you, you feel like you need these positions to have a more robust program, you know, other than the minimum, what are sort of the, you know, general outcomes that you're hoping to see as a result of, of these positions?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things, and that's a great point, Ms. Higgins, greatly appreciated. So even within our operational budget. Oops, I'm sorry. Yeah. We, we do have, we did have some students that we had to provide services, and we had to add positions mid-year to cover those mandated costs. So for this piece, some of these positions, one are going to be assisting those students. So there's program development built into this. So the ultimate goal for this is to really, at a younger age and then throughout our, throughout their processes, to keep them in district. Because if we don't have the staff and the funding to address specific learning disabilities, then, you know, that's where we have the out-of-district placement. So it's, the BCBA and these two special education teachers are, are in the air to assist with some of the learning disabilities that we have.
Thanks. Sean, the, the chance for the special ed, what was the, what was the jump? Like 40, 50 grand? Special, or $500,000 rather?
Yes.
You were so waiting for information from the state, if that was going to drop at all, so this budget includes that full number?
Correct.
So what happens if we pass this and the city council passes it, and then you find out that the government's going to change that? What happens to that extra money?
That will probably get rolled back into Circuit Breaker.
Back into Circuit Breaker.
Right.
We wouldn't have to dig way so deeply into the Circuit Breaker.
Okay, thanks.
And that, and that's a piece that, you know, once, and this is the, you know, this is, I think, when we talk about working in the schools, like, the majority of our efforts are dealing with human beings. So we could set this budget as of July 1st, and then there could be needs of students or families that is going to change that, in the positive and the negative. So right now, as we're looking at out-of-district placement, we're anticipating that maybe one or two of those students may either return back to Newburyport or may be moving out of district, so we're, you know, so that's kind of, that, those numbers keep changing, like, throughout the school year. Or we could have a student that is in one of our programs that's not making effective progress, that needs to do, you know, out-of-district placement in October. So it's not, as you're looking at special education costs and Circuit Breaker and programming, you've got to have that flexibility to, as, you know, to adjust either positive, where, you know, where some students are coming back, and/or a negative impact where, you know, two or three students need to go out. So that's, that's, that's the challenge of, you know, working with, the majority of our work is 100% people, so.
Just one more. So all these presentations you've done, and this is hopefully the final one, would you state that this budget does what's best for all students and makes the district move forward at the same time?
I would. I think a, a lot of this is tied to our strategic plan and the things we want to accomplish. I think, you know, Ms. Walker, and, and looking at transportation fees, we've been talking about athletic fees, we talked about place-based education. So as you see from our conversations, you know, the place-based education is a big piece that parents aren't going to have to support. And then the middle school athletics is a big piece that we're taking out of the athletic revolving account. And then we'll have more conversations, I think, down the road, looking at, you know, the overall athletics and user fees and all of that. But I think for, for us, this, this sets us up in a good position, number one, to continue with the in-district programming and to provide the supports necessary to, for our students and families to keep them in district. Number two, it defrays some of the costs for the parents, right? And number three, you know, when we're looking at the advancement of our technology, our one-to-one, that tech integrator position is crucial to shift how we're, you know, fundamentally changing how we're delivering education with the use of technology, not, you know, replacing good teaching. So overall, I think we're in a good place to move the district forward. We're putting all those pieces, I think, in place to, you know, to address the needs of all students, so.
Thank you.
You know, it was, you kind of answered my question, but I just want to sort of put it out there, that the interface between the technology integrator and the new one-to-one program is like hand in hand. It's critical.
Critical, absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, and I just want to follow up more on a comment. I mean, I think your presentation related to what the budget drivers are, I think the other budget driver is, you know, we have to be responsive to the needs of our population. And, you know, to the mayor's point about adding positions, I don't see this as an apples and apples to what the larger city budget discussion is. I mean, positions are driven by the needs of our students, and if we don't fund those positions, it's not a matter of like, oh, in a few years, we can recover that for that student. Nope. Two years, three years without that support is a huge gap in that student's overall career. And, and to your point also about moving forward, I mean, we also responding to a continually evolving learning environment. You know, the responsiveness of our schools during COVID was amazing, but I think we were in a strong place to be able to respond that way, and other districts weren't. And I think we do need to, you know, future-proof ourselves in a lot of ways in, in these budget discussions. We can't be unreasonable and ask the community to fund beyond what is reasonable, but I do think we need to think differently about our schools a little bit than we do maybe other, other city items, in that we really, if we don't fund certain items, it's, it's a big loss for individual students, and it's a big loss for families. And I appreciate the priorities to not place more burdens on families. We have, we, we still ask families to pay for athletic fees, we still ask them to pay for transportation costs, but our committee has held firm on not increasing those fees. And I think that's great. I think what you're trying to do is balance not placing burden on families while, while still being responsive to continually increasing costs. You know, special education and all the outside other, other needs aside, I think moving forward but also continually being responsive to a changing world is, is really important. And that's just a challenge at schools, you know, I think that puts us in a unique position in terms of the budget, that maybe is, is different from the rest of the city. And, you know, obviously, we put this in context of the whole city needs, but I think we're in a, it's a slightly different consideration, related, specifically related to positions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or questions?
Yeah, just a, just a comment. One of the things that I've really grown to appreciate with this district administrative team is that they're constantly rethinking, are we, are we getting the bang for the buck? And if we're not, what do we have to do? I, I think that that's really important. I can, I can remember voting on budgets that cut, cut, cut staff. And the rationale was, if we, if we just leave a skeleton there, we'll be able to rebuild on it, as in foreign language. And we're still rebuilding on foreign language cuts that we made 14 years ago. We were never able to rebuild. That wasn't a good idea. We did what we had to do at the time, but it was not a good idea. So I'm really glad that we're, you know, we're, we're sort of in a place where the last several years, we haven't been talking about cutting, we've been talking about reallocating, which makes perfect sense to me. And when we, when we need to add positions, there's a strong rationale for adding those positions in terms of impact on the district and working with our strategic plan, they're being driven by the strategic plan. So there's a, you know, back in the old days, we used to call that model coherence. You know, we've got the right people doing the right thing at the right cost at the right time with the right students, and that's, that's pretty coherent, and we've been moving in that direction. And I think this budget is another step in that direction.
Anyone else? Yeah, Ms. Higgins?
I'd just offer a, a comment. I, I really appreciate the, the budget and the transparency that you've shown throughout this process, being the first time that I've gone through it. And, you know, three of my biggest priorities is sitting in this seat, I see reflected in this budget. And so the first is, you know, addressing those with the greatest needs, and our students with disabilities, and we really see that coming through in the budget and your priorities to increase the types of programmings that is available for students with disabilities. Second is, is literacy, and I, I just feel so strongly, particularly with early literacy, but throughout all the early grades, is how are we supporting students' literacy needs? If, if we don't build a foundation in literacy, then students are going to struggle for the rest of their academic career, so that's really important. And I really appreciate the memo that you shared with a lot of those questions that I had about where do we see literacy versus math intervention in the budget? And you really clarified, you know, where do those positions sit and how many of them are there? So I, I do really appreciate that as well. And then the third piece is really strong tier-one instruction, so general education instruction in the?
Thank you.
General education classroom. And so a couple of places that I see that is the Orton-Gillingham training, which is for so many students, you know, general ed students that are going to benefit from that, from the, the teachers, as well as the technology. And you talked about keeping up with new modes of learning and new modes of instruction and, and keeping kind of our district on the cutting edge. And so, you know, when you implement any new curriculum, if you don't have PD to go with it, it falls flat, right? And so with the one-to-one program, if you don't have this tech administrator to help teachers actually use it well, then we're just, you know, kind of spending money for no reason. So I do see that as really important. And having said that, particularly on this, the, those last two pieces around literacy and tier-one, I, I'd really like to see, and I'm sure this is something that you're doing yourself, but just wanted to see, like, what are the goals and outcomes that you as, you know, at your district and your team have for those programs? Like, you're, have a really big investment, right? A big bet in, in both literacy and technology? Like, what are the outcomes that you want to see from students? And I certainly don't just mean accountability outcomes, like, but in general, like, what are you hoping to get from that? How are you kind of, you know, holding the district, yourselves accountable for, what are we, what are you putting into this and what are we hoping to see as a result?
Yeah, I think, you know, as part of, especially with, it's almost like we're working with our teachers in addressing the needs of the students that are sitting in front of them at this time, right? So we know that our students are the digital natives. They, you know, good, bad, and indifferent, they're, from the day they're born and getting to kindergarten, they're going to be very tech-savvy. So I think when we're looking at technology, and we want to enhance our technology with the teachers first, but also with the students, and it's really that understanding of having the students show us, you know, what they've learned in a variety of different ways, not just, you know, pencil and paper, you know, like the old days. So this platform allows us those big ideas in our strategic plan, where we want our students to be innovative, creative, collaborative thinkers. This tool will allow them to do that and then continue that learning outside of school. So learning is part of, we say, you know, we want this to tie to the real world. Well, the classes that the teachers are teaching with the use of technology is going to expand their world outside of, of the classroom. So it's really taking that vision that we have for a portrait of a graduate and then really implementing that into the classroom. So we said we want our students to be leaders, collaborative, empathetic, all of those really important soft skills, but how does that translate in the classroom? Are we giving our students the ability to have leadership skills, you know, in the class? And then what does that look like? So I think for us, it's really important. And then we're all, the students in front of us are all different learners, they have different ways. So the tier-one intervention to work with our mainstream teachers is critical because they can modify the curriculum to address the, the needs of all of our students. So we, that's kind of what we've been doing, I think, with our professional development, is working, you know, as teams. We have our skills-based instruction, that's really important to us, that really ties wonderfully to the use of technology, of recreating lessons, where students have the ability to show you what they've learned in a variety of ways. So that's, I think, how it all ties together, you know, and just a quick off-the-cut, that's kind of, I think, the vision, and it ties directly to our strategic plan, on what we want our students to have the ability, because we know the content and things are going to change, but having the ability, when they leave this world, we're preparing them for jobs that aren't even existing. So they're going to need to have the skills to be flexible, collaborative, empathetic, ability to work with people, critical thinkers, problem solvers, and that's going to be mimicked in the classrooms. So we've really feel with advancement of the technology, along with tier-one approaches, that it's just a nice blend, and with some of the professional development that we have going on.
Yeah, and I think that's great, and those are all the right goals, and I just wonder what your data is to?
Yeah, and?
With that, and, you know, survey data, vocal data is always there. I don't know how many questions are particularly tied to things like that, but, you know, even thinking about having student surveys that talk about, are you able to, you know, showcase your learning in?
Exactly.
The, you know, some, a way that's best tied to your strength, or do you feel like you have leadership in the classroom? You know, just some kind of survey, just so you can track for yourselves, like, how much is this technology making a difference for our students?
Right, and, and I, I agree 100%, and before COVID, we, we set up at the high school and also the middle school, student shadow days, so where a faculty member would be with the student throughout the day, follow them, and really sit in the classes to get a perspective of the student, which was really eye-opening, and then utilizing constructive dialogue with essential partners. Those students got to sit with teachers, and they had a breakout session where they got to communicate, and obviously in a safe place, of how can learning be changed to make them, you know, more fun for kids? And it was eye-opening. So coming back out of COVID, we're starting to pick those initiatives back. So student voice is essential as we move forward. So we did have different platforms, but I agree, student surveys, student shadow days, things like that, I think are really important, having the students at the table, so. I like that conversation. That's why we're all here.
On that note, are we, are we ready for a motion?
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
So I, I remember saying, I said this to everyone at the beginning, but I, I don't plan on taking a vote, I'm going to vote present on, on the budget. And I will say, if this passes, I will say, we are going to meet Thursday, and then we'll take what, what was voted on here, and I'll work with Phil and Sean, and we'll have to have a special meeting on Thursday.
I'm sorry, can you clarify that? I don't understand that comment. The special meeting?
So we set up a special meeting already Thursday in case the budget didn't fit into my budget, and?
Well, I, I actually think the meeting, that's, that's good to be aware of that. I, I thought the second meeting was in case it didn't pass tonight, but that's, that's helpful to know that we're going to have another meeting to work through. Yeah, that's good, I'm glad to hear that, because I would prefer to hear from you, yeah, how it's going to change versus?
Yeah, and I, I will just say, we're really close, and I really appreciate all the hard work Sean's, Sean's done on this. And like I said, I, I think we'll have some good conversations tomorrow, and we'll be ready to go on Thursday.
Is there, is there, I'm sorry, is there even a reason to vote then, if we have to do this again in two days?
I think we should, I think we should take a vote.
I think so, I mean, the way I'm doing this, I didn't like before how, how the mayor gave the superintendent a number, and then that's the budget we saw. I didn't like that. I think this is important to have these conversations. I need to hear why Sean thinks all these, these positions are valuable, and I think you should vote on it as a school committee, and, but that's, and then that's up to me whether that piece of the budget fits into the, the whole budget for the city. So it might just be ceremonial, because I'm at, I'm making you guys come to another meeting, but I think it's important that you guys take a vote on it.
I move that we accept the budget as presented by the superintendent.
I'm sorry, I had one more question. Do you mind if I ask? It's fine if you want to make that motion, and we can have a discussion after. Okay, that's fine. I'll second that.
You have a plethora of seconds.
The, just for the motion, the policy is DBD. Stick that into the motion. We're ready for?
Um, we're ready for discussion. Did you get the second?
Yeah, it was on Steve.
Great. Discussion.
Just a, a question on the groundskeeper position, um, because I don't think we've talked much about that. I know you provided the link to the original description. Um, can you talk a little bit about, um, the benefit of having a groundskeeper i- in light of capital needs and, you know, how sort of preventative maintenance is really important?
Yeah, so, um, we, there was, I think, a couple of things. So we would always have a groundskeeper in the budget and we hired, uh, a few years ago, a very talented groundskeeper that worked at golf courses. Part of his feedback, because he moved on, uh, to another job, but part of his feedback on the exit interview was having one, even though he was probably the most skilled and knowledgeable employee around landscaping that we've had, he says it's impossible for, you know, he gave Steve Burcom and myself, uh, exit interview and just says, this job is impossible to do for one person because they're cutting the fields, they're lining the fields for the athletics. So part of that, what we end up doing is we have one groundskeeper, our maintenance people are pulled out typically, um, you know, during the spring and summer and they're leaving the buildings to go out and help assist with, you know, cutting the grounds and, uh, weed whacking and all of that type of stuff. We pay a lot of money also for overtime for that to keep the, uh, grounds, uh, maintained. So this has been in the budget, um, you know, the assistant groundskeeper, uh, has been in the budget for a couple of years. But yet you're pulling resources when, you know, we, um, it's a hard job for one person to do. And then we're using overtime and things like that.
And, um, this is beyond just athletic fields? Is it, it's like, for example, the wear and tear out in the parking lot where it's starting to erode into
Yeah, the groundskeeper, they maintain like all, I mean, the city also assists with cutting.
Yeah.
Um, but it's really maintaining, you know, the grounds and, and the different areas of
Preventative maintenance and, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other discussion?
Quick question. Is there a, if we're close, is there a, um, target mayor of the city appropriation?
There is, but I don't, I don't think we should do it here.
Okay.
Um, because I want Phil to have the opportunity to look at the numbers and, and again, there's still be decisions that, that will be made. So I don't, I don't, I don't think it's more about the number, but I think it's about where we are with the number and how that fits into, to what, what, what we want to bring back to everybody. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, whatever you give me, we'll make it work.
Don't say that.
No, don't do that.
Well, but, but that's part of it. So like whatever we bring back, if you, if you all aren't happy, then you'll, you'll vote it down, I would imagine.
Correct. No, I think that's a good process. I appreciate that.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we'll vote and then vote again.
I would assume this is a roll call vote?
I would, I was thinking roll call vote. Is that what you'd like, mayor?
As long as I can still say present, then yes.
Sure. Well, I think that makes, makes sense, Ms. Yawell. Uh, should we go ahead or was there anyone else? We'll go ahead.
Mayor Vaden?
Present.
Bruce Mannen?
Yes.
Sarah Ball?
Yes.
Steve Bowles?
Yes.
Frank Callahan?
Yes.
Juliet Walker?
Yes.
Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the moment, it passes.
Okay. All right. Next, we have, um, a draft of our, um, meeting schedule. I noticed this isn't listed as a vote, um, which is fine. We're meeting again on May 1st, so, um,
Didn't we, and, sorry, just a point of order. So didn't we already have a first reading on this?
We didn't. I just mentioned it under new business.
Oh, this is the school committee meeting schedule, sorry.
Correct.
I'm confused between the two. Yeah, got it.
Um, I, I did mention that it was coming up. Um, and since it's not noted as a vote, we can just talk about it. Um, it's page sixty-three in our packet. Um, if there are any questions or concerns, and then we can vote on it, um, on Monday. Yes?
Uh, thank you. Vice Chair Hall. So, one thing that we have talked about a whole lot, and I don't believe have done yet since I've been here, is have the public give basically their wish list for the coming year. Um, and the way that the calendar falls, you know, we have the joint, the city council joint meeting in November, which really always seems way too early to me because we don't really know anything, what's happening. And then by the time we get to now, it's the public hearing on April 1st, but so much work has been done, the public has never really, and may, other than sending the district emails or whatever, they never come to us in a formal manner to say, we would like to see X. So I have a suggestion that the November 6th meeting also becomes the due date for what the public would like to see the following year in the school budget. So we'll, we'll do a whole thing about it, put it on the schedule, make a form, whatever it is, and say, tell us what you want, you have until this date, and then we present it, um, at that meeting.
Okay.
And then we know that we've got that information if people actually want to talk about it, and then that's what they, that's what they get. And then it makes more sense for the following meeting with the city councils, we can say, here's what the public wants from the school district, just so you know, to the council. And then we just carry on the way we, we do for the rest of the year.
So you're not suggesting adding a date, but
I'm saying just make that
Sort of clarifying the purpose of that meeting.
And it kind of goes in there as the addendum, just like the public, uh, the public notation in red.
He's talking about November 6th.
November 6th.
That's the deadline for getting feedback to us.
So we would just kind of highlight that as an opportunity?
Yeah, yeah, just so the public understands what, when the date is.
Mm-hmm. Did you want to say something about that?
Just, I think it's a great idea. I know other districts that do this, um, you know, have public hearings earlier in the process, you know, when Sean's getting together with his leadership team, you know, some of the things that may be brought up, uh, in a, in a meeting like that might, might factor in, you know, to some of those, to some of those conversations.
It doesn't even have to be a hearing, it's just, we'll market it like, if you want to tell us, this is how you've, you've gotten till now, and then we talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Yeah, I like that.
I, I support this idea. I'd just like to think it through a little before we put it on our calendar. I think it's a great idea to have, to have it. I don't know that we need to put it on our calendar.
Well, we don't, I don't, you're right. I don't think we have to have it there.
I think, I'd like, I'd love to consider this. Yes. No, I'd love to consider this and maybe November 6th isn't the best, you know what I mean? Like I think the details, maybe could we, could we reserve the details for?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't forget again.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great point. I, I totally support it. I just want to make sure we do it at the right time and in the right venue and maybe there's a different way we, you know, I just don't want to commit to that on this calendar without thinking it through a little more. That's all I'm asking.
Give ourselves some flexibility.
Yes, yeah.
Right. I mean, I would love to have people show up and, and comment. Yes, I would. So, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I just also wanted to point out that another mechanism for getting some feedback to us is the school councils. That when the school councils are discussing the budget with the principals, they're, they can also be gathering feedback from each school.
Sure. I mean, you bring, you bring a good point, though, and I've said this before, like, they never come here and say, hey, we talked about this. We rely on the principal of the building, maybe, um, so we can think about this more before we vote on this calendar, because we, this isn't a rush to vote on, right? We don't have to even do it at the next meeting if we didn't want to?
No, we don't.
At the end of the year, basically.
Yeah, I guess I, my point is to, like, I think we could adopt the calendar and then try to figure out when that fits on the calendar. It doesn't have to
Yeah, and it can, it can integrate somebody from the school council coming to the school committee too.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, not as a formal thing, because we don't, we have nothing, we can't tell them what to do, but, you know, that's a general meeting of the minds.
Right, they're also just getting going at that point. School councils have maybe met once or twice at, at that point in the year. I don't think they
Well, but they've got the previous year's experience and what they've been talking about.
That's true. It's someone who's been there for
Yeah.
Longer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. I, um, I think a couple of things. I think input's always important. I think we should look at a process, but the, um, I think the ask should also, also be tied to our strategic initiatives. I think that's really important.
Yeah.
And not, because that's what's really guiding us, um, with a lot of our budgeting. So if there are people that have input and they're looking at those strategic initiatives, you know, I'm all for, for, um, support like that too. So I just think it's like, how do you get that, the, um, a lot of people might not want to come to a meeting per se, but as Brianna, uh, Higgins said before, maybe it's develop in a comprehensive survey tied to the strategic plan on what priorities they see, so.
I wonder if it could even be something, something else other than a business meeting, like a, like a workshop.
Session, yeah.
Thinking about the, the meetings that the district held for strategic planning, where we got to do all of our sticky notes, right? Maybe, uh, maybe something like that
Yeah.
Would, would, um, we'd have more participation.
Yeah.
Exactly. And I can work with our leadership team to brainstorm, uh, some protocols that might work, that we can share as we move forward.
I think that would probably be more successful than trying to make it one of our meetings.
One question, because I know it's going to come up later. Did we address the issue with the conflict on the city council in June that we have had now for the past two years with the budget vote conflicting on June, in the June 17th meeting and then having the, um, Juneteenth holiday?
Well, it, that's going to be an issue this year and I was actually going to bring that up under new business.
Yeah.
But I believe with this calendar, it'll be fine, just because that Monday is, um, you know, it's, it, it doesn't conflict with Juneteenth.
Okay.
Because they tend to do it on a Tuesday. My guess is, I mean, that's a little far off to say, but I'm guessing since June 17th is a Monday, then theirs would be on the 18th, which is the Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, that's just a fingers crossed, but, um, and yes, I will address this year's, um, under new business.
Okay.
So, um, anything else for the, for the calendar? Okay, so we'll hopefully vote on that at our next meeting on May 1st. And, um, we're going to go on to subcommittee updates. Mr. Callahan, we've got, uh, finance to start?
Yes, uh, we met, uh, was it last week? Two weeks ago, thanks.
Well, last week was the vacation, so right before that, yeah.
Uh, the meeting was primarily about fundraising, uh, athletics-specific fundraising, um, brought upon by the current baseball fundraiser, which has any number of issues. So we all agreed to stop talking because the meeting was going long and essentially
Do we have that option?
Asking for a friend. I could think of some other meetings I wish we
Thursdays. Um, so I said to superintendent, you know, you know, I'll give you a break until the budget cycle's over, but
Oh, that's nice.
Once that happens, I would like to have the FinCom people hopefully direct the superintendent for like a full audit of exactly what the heck is going on with fundraising that, in the athletic department, where the money is, how much has come in, how it's being spent. Um, during my discovery for that meeting, I noticed that there was a policy we voted on in 2020 that said there will be a website page with the, you know, we get the current lists, but that's just static information. There's supposed to be a thing on the website with updated information as the fundraisers go along, and that was voted on in February of 2020 and then school closed the following month.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we all just kind of forgot that we've done that. Um, so yeah, you know, and that's, we just have to, you know, fix it, fix the process. And, uh, when I first met, uh, Mr. Gallagher, I told him he had a year to figure out how to get later start to work, half jokingly, and he did it in about a year, so I'll give you a year to fix this.
Well, you know, I would hate to have tried to add that information to the website as it was in 2020.
Oh, sure.
We now have a much more coherent website.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll be, it'll be great. It'll be, it'll be simple for, to be posted, so we'll have to figure that out.
Can I just, I know this is your report. I, I would just say
No, I'm finished.
I would, I would just say, I think the fundraising discussion should also connect to what our objectives are.
Sure.
I mean, the audit sounds great and understanding how, how much fundraising, but our objectives are, you know, do we need to be clear about what fundraising can be used for, who can do fundraising, what forms fundraising can take? Um, there's a lot of direct solicitations of parents and it's not always from the coaches.
Well, so I think, I think it would go in FinCom for that
Yeah.
Audit part, and then go to policy.
Yeah, so I think maybe a broad, and maybe we can coordinate on that, but a broader discussion, because I think that, I, yeah, understanding what the, what the fundraising fees are, but also how, how do we want fundraising to be happening? I know you guys have had conversations about this in the past, but there, there definitely are a lot of things that aren't directly fundraising and that are still asks of parents and it's an expectation, it's an expectation of kids that aren't always consistent from one program to the next. Um, so I think it would be good for us to have sort of an overall vision for
After the city council vote. Look out.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree. I think coming, I think we made some progress, um, as Mr. Callahan said before COVID, um, we had, uh, some pieces in place, but I think now that we're back, uh, to, to normal in the sense of, uh, schooling, I think it's important to bring that back to the table and, uh, really take a hard look at it. Yep, I agree.
That is all.
And are you, are you doing the, we're going to be voting to establish this memorial fund?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, right.
Were you doing that piece as well?
Got that from, where's that there? Okay. Um, the district is seeking to approve a, to create an account for the NHS Athletic Department to be used for donations in memory of James T. Stalen, longtime athletic director and football coach. I make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
All those in there?
No, is there any
He's taking your job.
It's okay.
We're just creating the fund and then the details are, will all be sorted and arranged?
It's, it's a similar fund, um, for, uh, former teacher and, uh, Ms. Kim Dow, the funds went to the
Same structure, okay.
Brezner and Library. So this would be, uh, a memorial, uh, fund sent in, um, in name of, uh, a great coach.
Great. All in paper?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm
I was going to say, I actually do have discussion because I thought of a question in the middle of.
I'm sorry.
Superintendent was saying, is it still legal to ask for a discussion? Since even though people gave their vote?
You were in the middle of asking.
Do you want to, do you want to comment on it?
Well, I guess my question is, we create these accounts all the time for different things. When this one gets created, is there anything specifying what the money can be spent on? I know he was an NAD and football coach, but does that mean all those donations can only go to football or all sorts, all sports boosters? Or how's it work?
I think it's the purpose for the whole athletic department.
Yeah, that's, that's why, my understanding.
Yeah.
All, all sports.
All sports.
Okay, great. Ms. Walker, were there any policy subcommittee updates?
Only that we are working to get the sections A through C, the revised sections, in front of the school committee for first reading for next Monday.
Yes, thank you. Great. Superintendent's report.
All right, just a few items. As we said, you know, one of the, our goals is to create that superintendent advisory council. We've met twice. So our last meeting, I shared the April 3rd school committee budget. We had great conversations from that and received some good feedback that helped us develop some of those FAQs from, from that group. So I'm excited about that group. It's just another group of stakeholders that, you know, we're informing of all the great work that we're doing in the schools. Breznerian Assistant Principal update. So we're pleased to announce Ms. Ally Burns as our new Assistant Principal of the Breznerian. We had over 60 applicants for the position and after a thorough interview process, Ms. Burns was unanimously selected. She's currently the math coach at the Brez. You might remember, Ms. Burns, we recognized her January 17th at school committee for all of her hard work. So we're excited to welcome her as part of our new administrative team, part of the team. And I think at the next meeting, we'll bring her over and she can say hi to everybody. Technology, just speaking of the work we're doing for the professional development, our technology cohort training. So our middle school tech integrator, Jackie Russo, is currently facilitating an iPad professional learning community, similar to that first community that we did. We have over 20 teachers across the district learning the iPad technology. We're really excited about that. They're expected to finish this summer and then we're looking to roll out another cohort of teachers in the fall. So I think all, this initiative is growing from the bottom up where teachers are seeing the benefit of their colleagues utilizing this technology in the class and we get more and more teachers that want to get involved, so, which is great. It's a little bit different than the high school in the sense that high school, we're focused on all of the training. This is a cohort of district teachers from Breznerian all the way up to the middle school. So we're excited about that. The other piece that's really exciting and, you know, in all of us, it's Free PD from Exterra is the Boston-based technology training organization. So it's XR Terra, T-E-R-R-A. So they offer free professional development, but it's really in the AI world, virtual reality and mixed reality. And you can kind of just get a, we've been talking about this, I think, through my superintendent memos to the school committee, but also how this technology is, is coming fast and furious. And I think we're positioning ourselves to embrace it and utilize it in a positive way. So we have a cohort of teachers, high school teachers that are going through that training. In addition, they provide student programming for students to partner with. So part of this company is also understanding that within the next year or two, there's going to be a whole job market of mixed reality, virtual reality and artificial intelligence that there's not enough workforce. So part of working with them is to inform parents and students of these potential jobs that are going to be in the near future. So we're just excited about this opportunity, but you know, once again, we do have that training going on. So my goal is, I think by the end of the year, is to kind of bring them in and kind of show what, what's happening with that. So that would be great. And then through the feedback from school committee members and Ms. Higgins, we're penciling in, I think, the May 15th for a data dive into those results from a lot of the programming. That would be more of our mid-year. The goal for us, I think, is our end of the year assessments are coming at the end of May and early June. But I think as we open up the school year, we can show the end of the year assessments and the growth of the students. So we'll do another data meeting for our school committee. So we'll put that together. We'll focus on the Brez, the really probably CADA grade eight. So we'll do similar data presentation and how the iReady and our DIBELS test and all of those are playing out in the classroom, so. And that's what I have. So thank you all very much.
Quick question. I know the enrollment, I think, period for the Apple iPad at the high school, do you have any sense of the enrollment?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I can, I think from Monday's meeting, I can get you specific numbers. But I know we're over, I know we're well over 200 students at this point and that was a couple of weeks ago, so.
New business, I have a couple of items. Just confirming, we will be having the special meeting this Thursday, April 27th, and that is 6:30 at the Senior Center. Ms. Yell, did I get those, did I get those details correct?
Well, I'm the library.
Let these three write it down.
6:30 at the Senior Center. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I, I did discover that we have the conflict with June 20th is the same night of the, the city council's special meeting to vote on budget. So I think my recommendation at, at this point is that we can cancel that meeting. We can, we don't need to do that straight away, but we'll just see how things go. We do have three more regular business meetings scheduled and if we can get our work done, then we won't have to try to come up with another date for June. Is there any other new business? Yes.
I am very, very happy to announce on behalf of Human Rights Commission that after several years of not being able to do the peace awards for students in the city live, we are going live and we have the award ceremony on May 25th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the auditorium in City Hall. I believe the mayor is going to be there, whether he knows that or not.
Yes.
The applications have been, the nomination forms have been distributed to all the schools, including IC and Charter School and we're really excited about, about being able to do this. So, and I just want to thank, the superintendent's office has been really extraordinarily helpful, Sean and Lisa, in getting these nomination forms out and I hope hounding the nominators to get them to us by May 15th and then we will have that award ceremony.
What time is that at?
6:00 to 7:30 at the auditorium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other new business? We'll be seeing each other a lot lately, so. Good? All right, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'm sorry, I stepped on your second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.